I call this meeting to order. It is 7:01 and this is the October 15th, 2024 regular city commission meeting for the city of Orman Beach. We are in commission chambers and this is our, our second meeting of the month. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in this evening by our deputy fire chief Nate Cordier and human resources manager Samantha Potts, who served as the greeters this evening. They also would have given you a card, if you need one, to speak on any of the items on the printed agenda. And if you still need one, you can get one from either the recording secretary or clerk. And I'm going to introduce those folks to you, all the folks actually sitting up in front of you. To my right and your left is recording secretary Taylor Lockard. Next we have city clerk Susan Baderas. Then we have our commissioner from zone one, Lori Talland.
A very sincere welcome to everyone.
Commissioner from zone two, Travis Sargent.
Good evening and welcome.
And to my left and your right, our commissioner from zone three, Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to each of you.
Our deputy mayor and zone four commissioner Harold Bryley.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
City manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant city managers Claire Whitley and down in front is Sean Finley. Then we have city attorney Randy Hayes. And then way to my left, way to your right, we have proactive police chief Jesse Godfrey and reactive fire chief Howard Dale. Chief, chief gave me five bucks to say that. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. And if you would, at this time, please silence your cell phones and we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Cord Bear at Tomoka Christian Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Father, it's a privilege to serve other people and grateful for this group and for their willingness to serve this community. I want to take a minute to pray for all those people that are continuing to recover from Hurricane Milton. We pray your blessing upon each of those families. We pray, Father, for your peace and comfort to reign in their lives. We're grateful for the first responders. We pray your continued blessing and protection upon each and every one of them. And we pray for our great city of Orman Beach and ask for your blessing, not only upon this meeting tonight and all that will take place, but, Father, just upon our community as a whole. We're ultimately grateful, Father, for the community you create through the blood of your son, Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to get right into presentations and proclamations and we'll start, and I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to come down front with me to help me out with this one. Hunter Windelstadt? You're with us? Good deal. Harold.
Woo, Hunter! Woo!
So we're doing a couple of different things. And I say that before every, every time we do proclamations and presentations. Orman Beach is an incredible city because we have incredible residents and Hunter is one of those. Deputy Mayor Bryley let me know about a situation in Major League Baseball with Hunter and his father, and you'll hear about that in the proclamation. And also, so we've got three things going on. Hunter, if you'll hold that. We're going to do a proclamation, we're going to give Hunter the key to the city, and then if the commission agrees shortly here, I've appointed him as an ambassador for the city of Orman Beach, and I just need you all to sign off on that. So I couldn't ask you about it before because of sunshine, but here we all are in an open, properly advertised, public meeting, and I'm seeing heads shaking, so I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be in good shape. All right. Whereas Harry Hunter Windelstadt III, affectionately known as Hunter, is a proud native of Orman Beach who has devoted his life to the sport of baseball, serving as a distinguished Major League baseball umpire and educator. And whereas he follows the legacy of his father, Harry Hunter Windelstadt Jr., who umpired in the National League from 1966 to 1998 and founded the Windelstadt Umpire School. And whereas on May 13th, 2024, during the Yankees versus Giants game, he set the record for the most Major League Baseball games officiated by a father-son duo, officiating 7,492 games between them, surpassing the previous record of 7,491. And whereas throughout his career, spanning over two decades, Hunter demonstrated exceptional professionalism, integrity, and a deep understanding of the game, earning the respect of players, coaches, and fans. And whereas Hunter has officiated at numerous prestigious events, including an All-Star Game, two wild card games, four division series, four league championship series, one World Series, and the 2009 World Baseball Classic. And whereas the Windelstadt Umpire School, which has operated in Orman Beach for 33 years, moved from Daytona Beach in 1991, founded by Hunter's father, Hunter took over operations in 2003 and continues to positively impact countless aspiring umpires, equipping them with the skills, knowledge, and mentorship needed to thrive in their careers and shaping the future of baseball officiating. And whereas Hunter's influence extends beyond the diamond as he actively promotes sportsmanship, fair play, and a passion for the game among young athletes and officials. He also engages with the community through participation in events like the YMCA Orman Beach and YMCA Edgewater Charity Golf Tournaments. Now therefore, based on all that, I, Bill Partington, along with the entire Orman Beach City Commission in Orman Beach, do hereby proclaim today, October 15th, 2024, as a day to honor and recognize Harry Hunter Windelstadt III in the city of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to join in commending him for his contributions and lasting legacy in baseball and the community. Congratulations.
Well, I was going to save my comments for the, actually, I was going to pull the consent agenda. But, Hunter, I just wanted to thank you, number one, for being the great friend that you are to the city of Orman Beach. This is well deserved. Congratulations to you and the, the dynasty, I guess, if you will, that your father started with, with the, with the umpire school. You continue on as an umpire, you make Orman Beach very proud, and we're proud to have the Windlestadt Umpire School in Orman Beach. And again, we appreciate you and we congratulate you.
All right, this is where we say, but wait, there's more. Because you, your dad chose Orman Beach and you chose to stay in Orman Beach for all these years, so many Major League umpires know our city, so many umpires in, in college, high school, statewide leagues, all know the area of Orman Beach because they come to your school for professional training. That's an incredible thing. They spend time here, they learn to love this area as much as we do. And so because you and your family chose us, we chose you, not only for the proclamation, but also to receive a key to the city from the entire commission.
Thank you all for, for the applause. Umpires very rarely get that, so thank you. That makes me smile a little bit. And I'm just going to sit here and be quiet and watch the rest of the meeting, but I would like to thank you, Mayor. You know how special this city is to all of us. We grew up in the same church together, and you've done an outstanding job, and I'm glad that I get to be here to tell you that. And best in your future endeavors, and we're behind you all the way, so thank you very much.
All right, now I need Commissioner Talland, if you would come down and help me out. And we are recognizing National Native Plant Month. And is it the president of the Paw Paw chapter?
Yeah. Oh. So the president of the Paw Paw Society is Karen Walters and her team. We're going to bring them all up.
Whereas native plants serve as the foundation of Florida's unique natural habitat that we all know and love. Native plants support wildlife, including birds, butterflies, bees, and other pollinators. And whereas National Native Plant Month, celebrated each October, raises awareness of the environmental, economic, and cultural significance of native plants while encouraging their preservation and cultivation across communities. And whereas native plants reduce the need for pesticides, they conserve water and play a crucial role in maintaining ecological balance and restoring natural habitats. And whereas Florida is home to more than 3,000 native plant species, including the rare Ruggles Paw Paw, which is found only in Volusia County, did I say that right? Ruggles? Amazing. Found only in Volusia County, highlighting the need for local conservation efforts to protect endangered species and preserving natural biodiversity. And whereas the Paw Paw Chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, founded by Orman Beach resident Joanne Ash in 1990, plays a vital role in educating the community about native plants. The chapter promotes the use of native plants in landscaping, restoration, and conservation efforts, ensuring local species thrive. And whereas preserving and restoring native plants combats invasive species and stabilizes critical ecosystems like dunes and shorelines, which are essential for wildlife and the health of Orman Beach's environment. Now therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Native Plant Month in the city of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to participate in local conservation efforts and learn more about the vital role native plants play in preserving the environment. Thank you all very much.
I want to thank you, Mayor Partington, for, and all the city commissioners, for your endorsement of our Volusia County proclamation. I really enjoyed, I, I like all the other things that you added to that. And I especially want to thank you, Commissioner Talland, for your endorsement and your assistance in the Regrow the Loop project, Badner Park, and now coming up, the Regrow Volusia. You're a true champion of native plants. We really appreciate it. Our organization is a little pressed with encouraging people and cities to use more native plants in their landscapes, and this endorsement of our native plants really means a lot, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Persis, you are next, if you'll come down and help me with this, and I need city manager Shanahan as well. We're getting everybody involved tonight. All right, this is Florida City Government Week, and whereas city government is the closest form of government, governance, to citizens and has the most direct impact, it is important for residents to understand how their city operates and the services it provides. And whereas Florida City Government Week, celebrated from October 21st to October 27th, is sponsored by the Florida League of Cities. This week aims to raise awareness about the significance of municipal government in residents' daily lives. And whereas this year's theme, What Makes Our City Great, promotes civic engagement and pride, highlighting the dedicated efforts of city staff who serve the community. And whereas throughout the week, the city will be engaging the community through social media, sharing fun facts about city operations, and highlighting city employees and their jobs. And whereas events throughout the week will include hosting the chamber's youth leadership program, annual employee appreciation luncheon, OB-to-go event held at the casemates, and a special story hour at Orman Beach Elementary with a reading of the book, The City That Talks. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim October 21st through October 27th, 2024, as Florida City Government Week in the city of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to engage with the city and take pride in what makes our city so great. Congratulations.
I just want to congratulate our city manager Joyce Shanahan for creating such a wonderful city staff and a wonderful city government right here. This is the, she's behind all of it. You know, she, she's in charge and she, all of our employees reflect her. So I just want to say congratulations. We are so proud to have you here.
This is a team of dedicated professionals that work every day to ensure your safety and well-being. We were truly tested in times like these when we have hurricanes of unprecedented proportions with rain that seem to never end. We have wonderful public safety staff that, the police and firefighters who come out in the middle of the night to, to save you, to ensure that our traffic lights are functioning. We have dedicated public works professionals that are clearing streets and unclogging drains. And it's times like these when your staff is tested, but I can tell you that they've been through this before and they shine. Are there some things that fall through the cracks? Inevitably, that happens, and we apologize for that, but we want you to know that we are dedicated to serve the community and this commission, so thank you very much.
All right, last but not least, Commissioner Sargent, if you can help me out. Forrest Reed? Did he make it? There he is. Come on up. I'll let you hand that to him. I don't know if you all know, uh, thank you, thank you so much. Outback Steakhouse in Orman Beach is an incredible restaurant if you like steak or blooming onions or you name it. Chocolate Thunder from Down Under? I mean, let's just keep them cranking out. Consistently, the Outback in Orman Beach, to my knowledge, has been one of the top performers in the entire northeast state of Florida because of the quality, the service, and all those kind of things. But one thing people may not know is, is what I'm about to read in this proclamation, and that's what good corporate citizens you are. So whereas on October 9th, 2024, Hurricane Milton made landfall on Florida's Gulf Coast as a powerful category-three storm, unleashing severe winds, tornadoes, and devastating flooding across the state, impacting countless communities, including Orman Beach. And whereas in preparation of this disaster, the generosity of a local business went above and beyond in support of our first responders and essential city workers. And whereas Outback Steakhouse, located at 135 East Granada Boulevard, demonstrated an extraordinary commitment by donating prepared meals to our first responders, including public works, police, and fire. These meals provided vital nourishment during their long hours of service. And whereas this is not the first time, Outback Steakhouse, managed by Forrest Reed, has assisted during a time of crisis. In 2022, during Hurricane Ian, Mr. Reed and his staff provided chicken dinners to public works employees and supported first responders with food and supplies during the storm's aftermath. I'll also include in here that they participated as a big part of our National Night Out program, which is a huge community outreach effort of, of the police department and leisure services and the fire department. And Forrest doesn't wait to be asked. He called me maybe a day or two before the storm, knowing that this was something that our employees were probably going to need, and I think, I think that's incredible. I put him with staff and they were able to work everything out. So whereas the efforts of the Outback Steakhouse team exemplify the spirit of community and partnership in times of crisis, serving as a beacon of hope and solidarity, now therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire Orman Beach Commission, do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2024, as a day to recognize the Outback Steakhouse in the city of Orman Beach and urge all residents to join expressing our deepest gratitude for their unwavering support and service to our city, staff, and community. Thank you very much.
You know, we don't do it for this, but thank you. It's very handy to send back to corporate and just be like, hey, there you go. Yeah, it doesn't hurt at all. Obviously, yeah, I was born and raised Norman, so I, I love this community. We wouldn't be here without you all. I'm sure you all noticed some of your favorite restaurants, you know, are either struggling or going out. You know, the, the tourist and Biketoberfest coming up, it puts extra money in the pockets, but we wouldn't be open without you guys. So thank you to you all, and we greatly appreciate it, so.
If I could call Mayor Partington to the front, please? Get your steps in, Bill. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my great honor tonight to present a special gift on behalf of the city of Orman Beach to Mayor Bill Partington. Bill, your leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to this community over the past 20 years have truly shaped a city that we are proud to call home. You've led with both wisdom and heart, making decisions that always reflected your deep love for Orman Beach and its people. Bill, you were born right here at Halifax Hospital, attended our local schools, and built your career in service to this community. You've been a public servant in every sense of the word, not just in the decisions you've made as mayor, but the example you set every day as a husband to Lori, a father to three beautiful daughters, and as a proud son who carries on the Partington name with honor. As we present you with this gavel and clock, these symbols speak to the legacy you leave behind. The gavel represents your leadership, your ability to guide this city through both opportunities and challenges with fairness and sound judgment. The clock serves as a reminder of the time and tireless dedication you've given to Orman Beach, always working to make it better for future generations. You have led with a steady hand and a compassionate heart, from championing projects like the Environmental Discovery Center to supporting our first responders and preserving the beauty of Orman Beach for generations to come. You've always understood that leadership isn't just about making decisions, it's about serving people, and you've done that with the utmost care and respect. On behalf of the city, the commission, and the people you've served so well, thank you, Bill. We know your legacy will continue to guide Orman Beach for years to come, and we look forward to seeing all the great things you will achieve in the next chapter of your public service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mom and Dad, if you'll come up, and Lori and the girls, if you'll come up. They smell great. Yep. I like recognizing other people, so forgive me. I, I kind of suffered through it. I got into it with Joyce when I saw this on the agenda because nobody cleared it with me before, before it was on there, but I should be better, should be better about it. It's been an incredible time of service, being able to learn from two other fantastic mayors directly, Mayor Costello and Mayor Kelly, serving with both of them on the commission, and then also learning from Mayor Persis more indirectly, because I just read about him in the paper and followed his, his career. But I tried to take the best aspects of both of their service and use those when, when I had the opportunity to serve. And so thank you for that. Staff made this job so much easier than it, than it could have been, and believe me, there are cities throughout the country that you would not want to be mayor of. At Orman Beach, it's always been a pleasure, even with an occasional bump in the road, with a professional staff that really cares about the residents who live here. You don't really have anything to worry about. Jacob, you should get up here too. Come on. I'm sorry. My son-in-law. Sorry for that. Proud University of Miami grad, and they're having a great year, so. Let me real quick, I want to thank this commission- Let me real quick, I want to thank this commission, and I brought them each a copy of The Observer from the last election, which has one of my favorite pictures on it. I save these, and so I'm going to give you each a copy. And Commissioner Sargent, if you'll hand those out. They hit the ground running and have done an amazing job. It's been one of the best commissions that I've served with, with their years of experience, and their caring, and their knowledge about the city, and their ability to talk to and listen to residents. They've really done an incredible job. And so, they didn't need me, but they accepted me. And so, I wanted them to have that picture to remember us all by. And then I'm also giving each of them a key to the city as well. Mayor Costello did this several years ago, and it meant a lot. And so, it's an honor to give that to each of them and thank each of you. It's been wonderful two years. We haven't always agreed on anything, I mean on everything. I couldn't sound right. But we were never disagreeable, and that was really the best part. We had some inside jokes and banter, primarily dealing with native plants and mulch, but that always, you know, we can't talk about much, but that one continuing running joke brought a lot of smiles and brought a lot of levity to the group. And so that was always wonderful. So thank you all very much. It's been awesome. And then the other two people I want to recognize are City Manager Joyce Shanahan, I'm giving you a key to the city as well, and City Attorney Randy Hayes. These two, let me get by you real quick, have been incredible individuals, professionals to work with. Thank you. And I don't want to say plot or scheme with, but to strategize with on the best way to protect this city and do the best for our residents. Really, there's a lot of years of experience and brain power there, and they truly do care about Ormond Beach. And so, working with them has been just incredible, and I wanted to recognize both of you for that as well. So I'll stop talking. It's been a special time. Thank you all for making it extra special. And I'm going to call the rest of my family up for a picture. And that's going to be, well, let me introduce everybody first. My lovely wife Lori, beautiful and Middle daughter Anne. Youngest daughter Faith. And then CJ and Jacob. CJ is really, she's the oldest, but I don't know, we don't think of her that way. She's the one we see the least because she's up in Tallahassee working on her doctorate. Jacob's working up there for fishing game. And so, I didn't know they were going to be here tonight. It's extra special. I've already almost cried three or four times after they showed up. And so, thank you all for being here. And then my mom, of course, I love to death. She's helped me keep my head on straight all these years. And my dad as well, kept me straight all these years. And it was growing up at his knee, really, with the J.C.'s and the Chamber and all the different groups that he was involved in. He's been my secret weapon because his name is Bill Partington, too. And so, nobody ever knew, I think for the first seven years, who the mayor really was. So it was nice to have some extra help there. Now I'm going to call up my sister and her family for the picture. Dawn, I see Emma. I didn't see Alina. Does she have dance tonight, maybe? Or Alina, I'm sorry. Is Emma have? That's what I figured. Emma's got dance. Pierce, Jude, and my brother-in-law Dyson, these are the Billings. And then Sandy is my sister. And Gary and Diane are my brother and other sister. Lori's side of the family, if you're keeping track that way. But come on up. We're going to try to get in for a picture. And Commission, if you'll stand up behind us, that'd be incredible. Even Joyce and Randy, if I could get you guys on either side of the commission back there. Por favor. One final request.
Come on, Joyce.
All right, now we can get to work. This is audience remarks regarding items not on the agenda. And I have a couple cards. Tonight, we'll start with Jeff Boyle.
Jeff Boyle, 614 North Halifax Drive. I second everything that Harold said. I'd like to add my thanks, Mr. Mayor, for 20-plus years of exemplary public service, strong, effective leadership, and particularly in 2024, when we really needed that leadership. I think you guys have handled the most complex and difficult issues in our city's history. And you've done that with great professionalism and style, with input from professional staff, and encouraged input from citizens. And so, this has worked really quite well. And wouldn't you know, after a difficult year at the very end of Hurricane, with devastating and tragic loss. But the silver lining in that was that we're able to witness the work and the professionalism of the people that serve and protect us. And that has never wavered. I believe it's a mindset, it's a culture, it's a work ethic. And that is a tone that's set at the top by the mayor and the commission, and the manager and her department heads. So that's a legacy. I think that is among your many legacies that we will continue to thrive with. And I think we should point out, too, that you're actually the third generation of Partingtons that has made significant and positive contributions to this community. And I think also, bearing in mind that your family, and we got to meet them all tonight, has shared you with the community, with the city, for over 20 years, I would submit that we now have four generations of Partingtons that have contributed to Ormond Beach. And thank you. Thank you.
Ike Leary.
Good evening. Ike Leary, Kasen Park. Harold, you took all my remarks. Anyway, I want to thank staff, all of you, for checking on the bait shop during the hurricane, especially Joyce, Robert Caroline. And I couldn't believe that Travis was out there with a shovel cleaning the walkway up to the pier. I looked out the window, and here's Travis. Couldn't believe it. Thank you. Mayor Bill, you're great. Ormond is a better place because of you. You will be missed. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Ike. Ed Mitchell.
Good afternoon. I came here in 1976 on vacation in December. I fell in love with this place, and I thought I'd move here when I retire. I came here in 2001 and bought a house. Let it sit empty for two and a half years. I moved down here in '03 in a little slice of heaven on Ormond Parkway. But now it's turned into a sewer street. I don't know what we need to do about it. Everybody on the block's upset about it. We just got raw sewage running 700 feet my way into the sewer next door to me, 500 feet the other way, goes on to Halifax, runs all the way to Seminole, which is another 400 feet that way. The city came out tonight, did put up things, says we're all sewage on there so people don't walk around the wall. But we need to do something. I've got a video where it backed up on my neighbor's house. Thank you, Travis, for doing everything that you have. But, you know, we need to do something. I don't know why or who needs to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Urinaka. Did I say that right? Hopefully.
You said that very well. Christine Urinaka, 155 Arlington Way. I know that right now with debris cleanup and all that's going on, this is not number one, but we do need to get this on the agenda and start talking about it. Arlington Way runs from Halifax straight through to A1A. It has become a cut-through street and running from one end to the other. It seems to have worsened in the past few months. Vehicles cutting through seem to have little regard for the speed limit and little regard for the families living on this street. A lot of people walk their dogs, ride their bikes, the kids are on their scooters. It really is an issue. Several months ago, a car was speeding down, lost control, struck a neighbor's boat, shoved the boat into their harbor. Now, across the street, that neighbor's grandchildren lived there. And had those kids been out and that car turned the other way, we would have probably had something very tragic. A few weeks ago, two cars came barreling down and looked like they actually were trying to pass each other in race. I don't even know how they thought they had enough room for that. It's becoming almost a daily occurrence now with the speeding cars down Arlington Way. So what I'm asking, because during big tourist events, obviously, there's even more cut-through traffic. I researched putting speed bumps in. What I found said that I can do it with your permission, but I have to pay for it. I really feel like the tax-paying citizens on Arlington Way deserve better than having to foot the bill for the speed bumps. And I don't know what other alternatives there are, so I'm just asking to direct me to some resources so that I can work in the background on this until we are kind of through Milton, and maybe we can start moving forward with some action for Arlington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll get you a card and somebody you can talk to, because there is a program. Next is Jennifer Bright.
Well, I was addressing the resolutions, so I guess I'll go over them all, or until I run out of these three minutes. Resolution 178 is a $10,000 grant that the city wants to get. Grants aren't free. This comes with strings attached, and it's going to cost the city 849 extra dollars the first year and $9,000 the second year. Not only that, this is grants being going to be used for license plate readers with remote video surveillance systems capable of automatically detecting vehicles and persons traveling on city roadways. This is an infringement of privacy and disguise as for the common good. I don't recommend getting grants if it's costing the taxpayers money. Resolution 179, once again, this is a grant. This grant will cost the city $783,059. Grants are not free when it comes with the strings, and they're putting taxpayers' expenses. Our mileage went up. We need to cut our spending. Resolution 180, the city wants to reimburse a private company, Valant Modular, for half the cost of installing additional length of pipe. This is a multimillion-dollar company. The city has loans, has raised our taxes. I really think the city needs to get its finances in order before we're giving away our hard-earned tax dollars to private companies. The biggest one is Resolution 32. This is the budget. Our original budget was for $97 million. They added $39-plus million in amendments to come up with $137 million, worth into the year. And now we're another $41 million short, which would bring our budget up to $161,000, $1 million for this year. The city's spending is unchecked and out of control, and our city council appears to have been negligent in not keeping a tighter rein on the items coming to the city council for approval. Budgets are set for a reason, and we all live within budgets. If the city is allowed to spend without accountability, why even bother with a budget? Our city council needs to do a lot better. I would hope that the fiscal year 24, 25, the city and the city council will get its spending under control, and we will pay off our debt and loans that we have taken. So we have under financial security and not in hock. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Marvin Miller.
Guys, every time I get to a microphone, it's usually for a fundraiser, but not tonight. I walked in the door, "Thank you, Travis." I happened to run into him at a restaurant. He said, "Tonight's the last night for Bill and counting October, November, the election." And comes up awful fast, where the time flies by. And I see a lot of old friends. I must be pretty old there. And Hunter, Catherine, so good to see you. Delightful. And congratulations tonight. And all of you, Lori, Travis, Susan, Harold, Joyce. Hello, Joyce. Where is you? Randy, okay. You've been netting that corner for an awful long time. Last time I was there, your hair was black. Look at it. Good thing you still have some. That's good. And Carl, hello, Mayor Persis. I like that ring. I like the sound of that. Mayor Persis. For some reason, that sounds really good. But congratulations, Bill. I want to tell you, you stood up an awful lot for a lot of issues and been there for me and for the groups that I stand for. And you're out there, and you put yourself out. And, you know, I can call this like a sitcom. I call this Friends. I mean, everybody, it's really, it's what a wonderful family. I look at all of you smiling face, but what a wonderful commission led by you, Bill. And I wish you so well on your future endeavor. And you're so well-deserved of it. And, well, I didn't realize such a large family. Get them all out to vote, you'll win. And thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Becky Parker.
Hello. I'm Becky Parker. I am the Executive Director of Ormond Beach Main Street, and I am just here to offer my sincerest gratitude to you for your partnership and your support over the years. There's nothing that I could say tonight that hasn't already been said, but I often say that we definitely would not be able to do what we do without the support of the city. And that really starts with our And that really starts with our elected officials. And you are mayor, you have always been our advocate. And you've been discerning and level-headed and passionate. And I'm just, we don't want you to go, but...
I won't be far.
But yes, and I, most importantly, you show up. And I think you're a true example of what it means to show up when it's not easy. You've led us through a pandemic and hurricanes and economic downturns. And you have been a friend to many and you've been sincere and authentic. And I just wish you the best.
Thank you.
And we truly, truly thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Yep. All right. Connie Colby.
Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. I'm going to ad lib here for just a second. In 2004, we moved here. And it was the first year, I believe, you were running for mayor. You showed up at, we moved to the Falls at that time, and you came there and you spoke to the people that were there. And I said, "Oh, my gosh, what have I gotten myself into?" And I remember your wife showed up a little bit later with some of your children, I don't know who they were. She was kind of hoping you would go home soon. And I don't blame her.
She still is, yep.
Anyway, I'd say wow for the last week. This past week, we had a lot of water on our street, probably about a foot for a couple of days. First time it's ever been like that. So I don't know what's going on around our neighborhood. And I thank some of you who took a little ride around. I appreciate that. It has gone down and we had a wire that took a while to be put back up. Things are back to normal, sort of. Central Park had, I thought they were supposed to lower the water in Central Park before big storms. For the first time, we have a three-foot drop-off in our backyard. And this is the first time the water's actually come up that high and come a little bit over the banks. It's coming down a little bit now, so I'm not sure what's going on with that either. What I'm asking is let charity begin at home when we need to have our manhole covers pulled up and cleaned out. The drains may be cleaned out more often. And if there's anything else going on, maybe, I don't know if there's a lot of field dirt being put in in places where it shouldn't be. Take care of us first before you start building something else outside of the city, no, further out in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. And Jim Cameron? There's Jim. That's right.
Good evening. I'm Jim Cameron, Jim Cameron Consulting. And I think it's probably an understatement, though, we can all say and agree. Hey, last week, it wasn't fun for anybody. And I just wanted to come up and express my gratitude, though, for your staff out there. Because I know Rashawn and Kevin in Public Works and their, I remember reading about that they've done some advanced work on cleaning out those culverts and some of those drains and stuff. I mean, just, yeah, and we had some flooding and stuff on our street. And I sent you all some pictures and I appreciate you all attending to that, though. You had a pump out there. And hey, I mean, I'm even getting my dogs out there on the street again now. But again, I know you worked hard on that, though, in advance. And flooding is going to happen, though, it's happened all over the county, pretty much all over the state. But appreciate you all's attention to that, though. And actually, just keep up the good work, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And last but not least, Carl Persis. Former mayor, former Volusia County Councilman, current school board member.
Yes, current school board member. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, you began, when you started talking up here in front of everybody, you said, "You know, there are some cities in the country where you really wouldn't want to be mayor." And I was thinking, you know, there are some cities in the county you wouldn't really want to be mayor. Now, I won't call out any names here tonight, but I think you know the one I'm talking about. All right. I want to say that sitting in that middle seat requires a different set of skills when you do it right. You do a lot of listening. You've got to kind of placate the egos of your commissioners. You've got four of them, you know? You're trying to be fair, you're trying to balance, you're trying not to show any favoritism, you know? You've got the audience, everybody's looking at you. And you want to set that professional, fair demeanor. And you do it so well. And you do it at every meeting. And even if you're not sitting here in person, I listen and I can just hear your grace and I hear your patience. And it takes a lot of patience to be a good mayor, because sometimes you just want people to, you know, just say it and get over it, but they don't. They go on and on and on. And you do it so well. One of the things that I'm going to miss, Mr. Mayor, is our Teacher of the Quarter events. Mayor Partington and I, for the last eight years, we have visited 10 schools every quarter, so that's about 40 schools every year. And we surprise teachers and we go into their rooms with two members of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's just a lot of fun. And they love it when you give them the key to the city. It just makes their day. So I'm going to miss doing that with you. I just have to say again, you've always served with dignity, integrity, and compassion. You're just a fair, fair person, and that comes through. Last thing I think I would say is that when people are ready to praise you for something, you quickly divert that praise and you give credit to everybody else. And that's what Bill does. So I just want to say in closing here, I'm glad that you'll be joining me on the mayor wall of former mayors. I'm proud of everything that you have done and, most importantly, proud to be your friend.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. Commission, we are now on approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the regular city commission meeting of October 2nd, 2024. They've been sent to you for review, also posted on the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Commissioner Sargent?
Second.
I'd like to make a correction, Mr. Mayor, first.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to correct my closing comments at the last meeting. I say that the reports that were in question were showing, that were not showing over a year old, that they were only a few months, and that was incorrect. They are showing a little bit older. So I just want to correct that for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Good deal. Is there a motion to approve as corrected?
I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time if any member of the commission wanted to comment on any of the consent agenda items. We'll start with Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, I just want to mention the, our health savings account. We get up to $1,850 a year in savings through the city insurance. And it's just a wonderful benefit to city staff. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and thank you for keeping that up. I appreciate it.
Great. Deputy Mayor, did you have anything?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to come on, again, just to relate with the point, I'm a, congratulate Mr. Wendelstadt. Now you're an officially goodwill ambassador for the city of Ormond Beach. You continue to make us proud and thank you very much.
Absolutely. Commissioner Sargent, and then Commissioner Talland.
I'd like to make a comment on Resolution B. That is the license plate readers. And I did some research on this with, and the National League of Cities recommends that when we put this out for bid, there's a few things that we should really focus on. One is community engagement. Two is choosing a company with extensive data privacy. So it says, "Choose a vendor that implements strict data privacy measures to protect the information collected." Training is another one, to ensure the law enforcement personnel are trained in the use of the technology and adhere to the established protocols. Regular evaluations and legislation and regulations establish clear policies governing the use of license plate readers and to prevent misuse and protect civil liberties. So I think that when we put this out for bid, I think those are some guidelines that I would like staff to adhere to and when we go forward with choosing a vendor. Because I do think license plate readers are a good thing when they're used properly. And I do think that they've helped our law enforcement officers solve crimes more quickly. But I also do think that they could be used improperly, and I think that's something that we need to really focus on. The second thing, Mr. Mayor, would be the insurance, the savings, health. I don't know when the last time was that was bid out. I know we bid out this year and saved the city some money, so I don't know if maybe next year, that's an item that staff could look at. Just want to throw that out there as something to potentially look at in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Talland?
On Consent Agenda A, I just wanted to officially congratulate Hunter as well, being an ambassador. I was a good friend of your dad's and he was very special to me. And I know that, you know, you've honored the game of baseball and you are also, thank you for honoring the community of Ormond Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Hunter, you talked about going to the same church and being an Ormond Beach local. I mean, you and your dad are such an integral part of our community. We're so proud that you kind of belong to Ormond Beach. And the lifestyle that a major league umpire leads, I don't think most people really understand how much you travel. You're sometimes in, I don't know, three or four different cities in a week for months on end. But yet, when it's all said and done, you still come back to home, which is Ormond Beach. And I think that's incredible. Knowing now that you're an ambassador makes me feel great. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Brierley, for, you know, the proclamation suggestion and making sure that this happened. We were running out of time, I wasn't sure it was going to happen, but staff managed to pull it all together and your schedule worked. And so we're grateful for that and congratulations again. If there's nothing else on the consent agenda, Commission, we'll go to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 9A.
Ordinance number 2024-30 and ordinance amending Chapter 3, Performance Standards, Article 4, Sign Regulations, Section 3-47, Business Premises Signs, Subsection G, Electronic Changeable Copy Signs of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by expanding the allowance of electronic changeable copy signs and establishing conditions of operations and permitting standards, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-30, read by title only.
Thank you. And since it is a first reading, I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. Stevens Breaker, Planning Director with the city. This is a request for a land development code amendment based on direction from the commission back in May of this year. There was direction to go to the planning board and develop standards for electronic changeable copy signs. Over the course of three meetings, the planning board formed the amendment, which is in your pocket tonight. There was really four points that came as part of discussion. One was, are electronic changeable copy signs an appropriate type of signage? What areas of the cities would these signs be appropriate? What should be the conditions of electronic changeable copy signs? And then who should be the approval process, whether it be staff, a special exception, or plan development? So the planning board worked through those items and the conditions are within your pocket. They recommended staff have approvalability of these signs. Signs that couldn't meet the staff criteria would come for the board and before the city commission. Planning board did recommend approval of 7-0 of the land development code amendment. If there are any changes that the commission wants, we'd be happy to discuss it or go from there. Staff is recommending approval based on the planning board.
Thank you, Stevens. Any questions for Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other discussion, no cards?
No cards, no, sir.
I move approval of ordinance 2024-30.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9B.
Ordinance number 2024-31 and ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 3, General Regulation, Section 2-50, Accessory Uses, Subsection W, Outdoor Activities of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code to update the conditions and permitting requirements for outdoor activities, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or part thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-31, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And again, I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this.
This is a request for our land development code for outdoor activities. These outdoor activities are temporary in nature. They're approved by staff. They could include sidewalk sales, church events, basically items that are temporary in nature. There are really four types of outdoor activities, retail special events, the seasonal holiday items, our Christmas trees, our pumpkin patch sales, nonprofits, school car washes. What we've seen is a number of corporate entities trying to do outdoor events related to their business operations. No retail sales, no general public. That is something that our code doesn't really address, so we've amended the code to allow it. We also took the opportunity to reorganize the section. The planning board reviewed this amendment and recommended approval with a six-to-zero vote.
Thank you. Any questions for Stevens?
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-31.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9C.
Resolution number 2024-194, a resolution declaring the intention of the Ormond Beach City Commission to consider vacating a portion of Corbin Avenue, a platted public right-of-way within the property located at 1 South Beach Street, Volusia County Parcel Identification Number 4215-14-03-0010, known as Casson Park, establishing a time certain for a public hearing and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution number 2024-195, read by title only.
Thank you. And we'll go to Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
Good evening. Stevens Breaker, this is a request for a partial right-of-way vacation of the Corbin Avenue right-of-way. So we're located right here in the commission chambers across the street. This is a right-of-way that goes through Casson Park. The goal is to vacate that right-of-way as part of the park redevelopment. Staff has coordinated with all applicable utilities. They have no objections. If the notice of attendance approved, it would come back as an ordinance in December and January of 2025.
Perfect. Thank you. I think it makes it...
I move approval, 9C.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9D.
Resolution number 2024-196, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception redevelopment plan regarding Casson Park, located at 1 South Beach Street, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution number 2024-196, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, we'll go to Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
This is a special exception related to the Casson Park redevelopment. When the item went through the Site Planner Review Committee, there were certain standards that the design could not meet, primarily based on setbacks. Setbacks to Corbin Avenue, which we're vacating, which... we're vacating, which will take care of that. The Granada Boulevard right-of-way along the bridge, and the waterfront yard. The structure is being moved further from the waterfront, but it still needs a variance. And then there's some minor landscaping requirements that are sought to be waived. The planning board reviewed the application and recommended approval of 7 to 0. The design team is here. If there are any questions, staff is recommending approval based on the planning board.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
No questions, just a comment, if I may.
Sure.
I'm just super excited that this is on our agenda and that we're actually moving forward with it, and we'll have a Casson Park at some point.
Agreed.
Agree. We all are so excited.
Great. And I do have one card from Jim Cooksey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Cooksey. I'm partner in Ormond Landing LLC, in office at 1230 North US Highway 1 here in Ormond Beach, and my partner Jane Dotson.
2212 Oak Street.
So as one of the only private property owners within 300 feet of Casson Park, I got a letter and said if I had any comments, I could come here to speak. And I'd like to just take the opportunity to briefly address the commission. We appreciate the acknowledgement of our ownership, which heretofore has been kind of ignored by the city, that proceeded with dredging and construction of the breakwater on a portion of our property along with other uses. It is private property. It has the same property rights as any other piece of private property. But that said, we would have accommodated any requests if they had been made by the city, and we applaud your efforts to improve the park and obviously offer no objections to this ordinance or the variance. A little background, we've approached the city a couple of times over the years with concepts for the parcel. I gave you a little handout there. The late Bill Dotson and I were partners on the Tamoka River. And Bill, we realized, I realized, because I appraised marinas and stuff all over the state of Florida, that private ownership of submerged land adjacent to underutilized public uplands in an urban setting just offers some unique opportunities that otherwise might not be permitted on sovereign submerged land controlled by the state. So for the record, I gave you a little handout there with, yeah, summarizing the vision of, like I said, Bill and I used to sit on the Tamoka River and talk about stuff. And this property was here, and the reason we bought it was because it was there. And Bill was one of the city's leading advocates for historical preservation. And Bill was, he passed away in 2022. And he was also a prominent creative visionary in the area. He was part of the architectural team that designed the Daytona Beach International Airport in 1991. So I realize, you know, we floated some ideas, pun intended, but it may be up to the next generation to realize the potential of this location. Raised my family here, my grandchildren are here living. It might be the next generation. But in the meantime, it is an ideal location for a family house boat to park there. Why can I complain? You dredge the property, you put a breakwater there on a property. But I would also like to inform the commission that there is an offer on the table that was made to the city manager a while back to lease the property to the city for a very nominal amount at any time in the future you feel you might want to control the basin there. And again, congratulations on Casson Park. It's beautiful. And thank you for the, thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, you're a great guy. I also had long conversations with Bill Dotson about this and other things. He was a visionary and a great individual himself, and I miss those conversations. So, Commission, I don't have any other cards. Commissioner Persis?
Yeah. I just wanted to, for those in the audience that may not know all of this, the redevelopment of Casson Park includes relocating the bait shop further from the water, restroom renovations, native landscaping improvements, opportunities for public art, improvement to the Veterans Memorial, and reconfiguration of parking spaces and walkways. And this plan is compliant with the 2019 Downtown Master Plan. And I know we're all so excited to have this, so I just wanted the people out there to know what we were talking about in case you didn't. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 9D.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion, questions, or comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and move to 10A.
Ordinance number 2024-32, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 by amending the General Fund 001, Downtown Redevelopment Trust Fund 104, Stormwater Utility Fund 107, Airport Fund 108, Economic Development Fund 110, Pension Contribution Pass Through Fund 113, Recreation Facility Fee Fund 115, Financing Debt Service Fund 205, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Equipment Renewal and Replacement Fund 302, Public Safety Vehicle and Equipment Fund 305, Transportation Improvements Fund 308, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Leisure Services Capital Fund 322, Water and Wastewater Fund 401, Vehicle Replacement Fund 408, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, West Ormond Reuse Impact Fee Fund 433, Water System Impact Fee Fund 434, Wastewater System Impact Fee Fund 435, 2024 Water and Wastewater Bonds, and the General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-32, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask our Finance Director, Kelly Maguire, to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. So we have your annual budget amendments. Good, give that up. The largest portion of this are capital projects that we're asking you to move from fiscal year 2223 to last fiscal year. So it's important to note that this $19.6 million is not new dollars we're asking you to expend. They're dollars that were included in the original budget for 2223, and because they're capital projects and it takes time to bid them out, bring them back for approval and so forth, we end up having a timing issue effectively. So this is...
It's an every-year thing.
We do it every year, right?
Yeah. And it's kind of true enough, the budget for transparency purposes, so everybody knows where everything is. That's what I think.
Exactly. And the state requires us to do that, right? We have to have that budget in the fiscal year that we actually expend the dollars. So these are budgets that started in the 23 year, we're moving them to the 24 year, but they're not new dollars. Similarly, and the mayor will know this, right, I'm going to talk about the transfers, $15.7 million. We have this very quirky thing we do in governmental accounting, which is we end up taking dollars in one fund, and we have to transfer them to another fund. When we do that, they get budgeted twice, but we only spend the dollars once. That's the $15.7 million. Those two items together make up 85% of this budget amendment. So those are the ones I want to focus on. But also, I'll talk about the Police CBA, right? That's the collective bargaining agreement. That is a timing issue. That was retroactive back to '22, so that's why we're asking you to amend that. That also includes $400,000 of state funding that we're receiving to help us with pension costs. So that's a positive for us. The new grant funding, that's for Business Park Drive Phase 2. That has been in our CIP for many years, but unfunded because the city has not had the funds or decided to put our funds towards paying that. So more than half of that would be funded through a grant. So that is also a positive for us. The next item includes two things that really are not within our control, but very important, the PAC fire and the fuel farm issue. So that's the $1.6 million. And then we have the inflationary additions, which for the most part are chemicals for the water and wastewater plant. So that's the total of all the budget amendments that we're asking you to approve.
Thank you. Kelly, any questions for Kelly? No? Good job. All right. I don't, oh, I do have two cards, actually. Jennifer Bright, first up. Did you already cover it? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And then Connie Colby.
Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane. I did see one item in there that I would like to, I don't understand what it's about. Under transportation, there's an item that says fuel farm analysis for $60,000. I would appreciate some information as to what that might be. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joyce, did you want to take that? I thought we were having, or Kelly, either way, I thought we were having a study done in our efforts to continue to understand the impacts to the city of what a fuel farm might involve?
Yes, you didn't need either of us.
Okay, perfect. That's what it was. Good deal. Commission, any other questions? I don't have any other cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-32.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10B.
Ordinance number 2024-33, an ordinance of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, amending Article 4, Police Officers Pension Trust Fund of Chapter 16, Pensions and Retirement of the Code of Ordances, amending Section 16-74, Finances and Fund Management, Establishment and Operation of Fund, Providing for Severability and Provisions, Providing for Codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-33, read by title only.
Thank you. And, Commission, I don't have any cards. If you need to, I can ask Kelly Maguire to speak on this item, or if you feel like you're comfortable with the information presented in the staff report.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10C.
Ordinance number 2024-34, an ordinance recognizing a declaration of emergency issued by the governor of the state of Florida, effective throughout the state, including Volusia County and the municipalities situated therein, recognizing a declaration of local emergency issued by Volusia County, effective throughout the county, including the municipalities therein, ratifying and affirming a declaration of emergency issued by the mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, effective throughout the city, authorizing temporary emergency administrative procedures to facilitate the provision of expeditious management of building permit applications, authorizing the issuance of onsite permits for repair of damage caused by Hurricane Milton, providing for the waiver of permit fees associated therewith, prohibiting unlicensed or unauthorized contractors from engaging in unlicensed or unauthorized activities, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first and only reading of ordinance number 2024-34, read by title only.
Thank you. Commission, any questions about this?
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we are now on discussion and direction items, and we'll start with 11A, the City Attorney Evaluation. I don't have any cards, Commission, and I don't know who wants to go first, but we were provided all the materials and the evaluations completed. Thank you all for getting that done in a timely manner. Anyone want to start?
I'll just say, good job, Randy.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, I'll just, I will just read my comments. Thank you, Randy, really, for everything you do for us. You keep us, keep us straight, and you keep us informed, and, you know, no questions ever silly or, you know, unreasonable, so I appreciate that. But I did, I did write on my comments, "Our commission and city are incredibly fortunate to have you, Randy Hayes, as our city attorney. Your ability to navigate challenging situations with a positive proactive approach is invaluable, and your dedication consistently benefits our community. And just recently, and what of late, the most wonderful thing you've done is to guide us through the Belvedere situation. And thank you so much for that."
All right. Commissioner Talland, and then Commissioner Sargent.
So I just used a couple adjectives. One is knowledgeable, approachable, fierce protector of our community and the residents that live here. I appreciate your leadership and your proactive guidance to protect and serve our community, and I'm 100% grateful to you as our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner and Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think my comments go for both the city attorney and the city manager. You know, I think, as Mr. Boyle mentioned, this commission's been faced with lots of tough issues, probably more than most previous commissions with Belvedere, Tamoka Oaks. We can just kind of go on and on, and through y'all's leadership, both of you, very fortunate to have your knowledge and leadership to guide us through all these difficult situations. So thank you. That goes for both.
Great comments. And Randy, I'll just say that you've always been a pleasure to work with, extremely knowledgeable. I'm constantly blown away by how well you know whatever the issue is, from the very beginning, however many years ago it started, all the way to where we are at present day. And you retain all that and can repeat it, and you analyze it, and it's just incredible. Any city would be lucky, or any county, any governmental entity would be lucky to have your services. You rely on your staff, you talk to other attorneys, and then you critically analyze each and every item and develop a strategy that protects Ormond Beach residents ultimately. And we've seen success after success with that, and I expect only continued success in the future. So thank you for, thank you for that. Did you want to comment at all? You don't have to, but...
I just want to thank everybody for the congrats. It's really a reflection of your leadership and the staff that works in the city attorney's office. And Joyce would tell you the same, the staff that works in her office. We would not have the success without the cohesive leadership from this commission. And it makes our job so much easier, and it helps having a very solid staff to work with. It's a pleasure working with each and every one of you, and I just appreciate the opportunity to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And we'll go next to 11B, which is the City Manager Evaluation. Commissioner Persis?
I'll go first. Joyce, I would like to compliment you. I know you get embarrassed, but no, I'm just gonna, I would like to read my comments that I wrote on the, on the application. I have deep admiration for the incredible work you do as a city manager. Your unwavering dedication to Ormond Beach and its residents is truly remarkable. Your leadership has made a lasting impact on our city, and it's clear that our city thrives because of your vision and your commitment. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Who's up next? Deputy Mayor Brierley?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll just keep mine, like it was, short and sweet. Keep up the great work. We appreciate you, and we're also fortunate to have you, Joyce. Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Talland?
So my definition of you is a caring leader, my description of you. I appreciate your vast experience managing our city finances, as we've had many discussions about that, and identifying the needs of our community to ensure our citizens' quality of life. Together with Randy, you both are proactive, protecting not only the commissioners, but also the residents in our community. And we're very appreciative of that. And we have had some real issues in front of us, and we did work together as a cohesive unit with your leadership and Randy's. I also appreciate, I don't know if anybody's going to mention, your active participation in other organizations within our community. You being visible in our community to others is much appreciated, and I know you're very well-respected, and your input is very impactful. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sargent?
I said it before, with Randy's comments, it's all tied in together, but I'll just say thank you.
Perfect. And, yeah, it is a little intermingled. I was, forgot to say, when talking about Randy, the way that Randy and Joyce and their staffs work together is also incredible and a huge benefit for our city, always in lockstep and always checking with each other, never getting ahead of one another. And collaboration is kind of the word that comes to mind. I appreciate that. Joyce, I wrote, "You continue to perform at an exceptionally high level, well-respected by all. I continuously..." I continuously hear great things from the community about you in regards to not only you as a person being of strong character, but also to your service to Orman Beach and how lucky we are." And some people have commented that they were going to try to steal you. I hope that never happens. But, you know, you serve in all the other organizations that you serve on, not just Orman Beach, but our entire area and the state of Florida. Our city is lucky to have such a dedicated consummate professional at our helm, and you're an excellent role model for all Orman Beach with a great work ethic, great communication, and you can always trust you to do the right thing for our residents. I didn't write this part, but I thought it, even when no one's looking. You always do the right thing, and I, I've always appreciated that, so excellent evaluations for both of you. It says motion second and call vote here. I don't know for sure, Commission, if there's anything other than, other than accepting the evaluations.
I approve, we, we approve their evaluations.
I second it.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion, comments? And Joyce, did you want to respond before we?
Just a brief moment. You know, we don't do this alone, and Randy's correct, that you set the tempo, you set the leadership at the commission level. You are a collaborative group, you listen to one another, and you take each other's advice, and you truly deliberate on the things that are important to our residents. And so we, Randy and I, take our cues from you, and I think our employees take our cues from Randy and I. And I, I couldn't be more proud of our, our employees and how hard they work, and I'll talk about that a little bit during my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And related to item 11 is the issue of salary for the city manager and the city attorney. They would never ask for an increase, Commission, I can tell you that from having been here in years past, never even bring it up, so I'm bringing it up because I know it's our responsibility as a commission to, to review their situation and make those decisions regrettably. In some ways, I won't be here probably to make that final decision, but I wanted to at least discuss it amongst ourselves, and you'll be a new commission next time you meet, to see if perhaps you wanted to direct staff to bring you back information on salaries for comparable-sized cities, both in Volusia County and around the state. Not only comparable size, but comparably situated, a coastal city of approximately 45,000 people with an airport and whatever other amenities we have. I don't know how many of those exist, but, and then look at the, compare the salaries for both city attorney and city manager. I think it's important, just so that we're staying current, we don't, like I talked about, other people hopefully jokingly saying they want somebody, they want somebody to come work for them. We don't want them to, offer them more because we're underpaying in any particular way, and I think it's smart just to review it every so often, so I wanted to bring that up as, as a discussion item for the commission, and then we could, if there is a desire to do that, give direction to staff to bring that, bring that back to you.
I think it's appropriate that we
I think it's appropriate, yeah.
Get the, gather the information and bring it up for discussion.
I agree.
I don't know, like, how long, how long it's been since a raise, I, you know, so all that information would be very important to know.
Perfect. Any other information that you would like with that, along with, you know, some sal- salary analysis, how long it's been?
Comparisons, you know, and
Similar-sized cities, like you said, you know.
Perfect. So I would consider that a motion, Commissioner Persis?
I move approval to do some research on providing us information on salaries on similar cities for our, for city managers, city attorneys, and, and information on the last time they had a raise, and bring that back to us so we could talk about it.
I make, I'll second that.
And second. Commission, any further discussion, comments, or questions? Please call the vote on that, Susan.
Jen?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now we are on reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we've just finished the major parts of the storm itself, Hurricane Milton. We activated our EOC, I think it was Wednesday, late afternoon, early evening, and closed it down Friday. I will tell you, we had unprecedented rains, the likes of which we've not seen for a very long time. The water rose quickly in some areas, notably in Central Park. There's a lot you can't do about rising water. You just kind of have to wait until it, it recedes. We have interconnected the lakes in Central Park, and that did make a difference over in the Fleming area. As you recall, Mr. Mayor, in the storm of 2009, the No Name Storm, we had unprecedented flooding over there. The efforts that we went through to get hazard mitigation grants to help with that pumping has made a significant difference over there. There are many low-lying areas in the city that need future addressing. We're working on the areas around Putnam, around the PAC, around US-1 there. Those are areas that have to be addressed, and we'll continue to look at those and find ways to, to make improvements to those. Sadly, we had loss of life during this storm. One individual succumbed to a cardiac arrest, and another individual succumbed to a tree falling in their home. Just a tragic accident that happened, so we, we pray for their families and offer them support in their time of need. Your city employees were there the whole time. You don't have to ask them to work hard. They, they work hard. The day before the Wednesday, we handed out 10,000 sandbags in two, a total of 10,000 in two different locations, and that's unprecedented. We've had a sandpile active all summer long. We've had, I think, over six truckloads of sand. I don't know how many tons that equals, but it's a heck of a lot of sand. So we've had that sandpile open since June 1st. So we gave out a lot of sandbags, and we hope that helped a lot of people. But every storm is different. You never know where the wind's coming from, or how much rain you're going to get. It's always a learning experience from us, and we know that there's areas that we can improve, but I'm here to tell you that everybody from police and fire to public works and parks and recreation, leisure services, city clerk's office, everybody worked hard as a, as a team together to try to get the best for this community, and now we're in the recovery phase. That's a little bit longer of a phase, and we continue to work to ensure that our community gets cleaned up, that we identify those areas that need future improvements, look for grant opportunities to improve those areas, and, and move forward. Just a couple of other things. We have, we say goodbye to you, Mr. Mayor, tonight. It's, when you called me up on the phone and you said, "I didn't, I didn't approve that item on the agenda," and I said, "Yeah, you're right. I made an executive decision," because I knew you wouldn't approve it. But I'm glad your family was here to see you on your last night here at, at the dais. You've been a great leader, and you truly have the heart and history of Orman Beach, and we are going to greatly miss you. I know our employees respect and appreciate you. You always come out and share with them any exciting things that are happening. Our community relies upon you to be the face of our community, and you represent our city so very well, and you will be greatly missed. See what else? You have a couple of items coming up, and I know they're near and dear to your heart, so I'll just read those activities to you. Number one is the Veterans Day Luncheon on November 7th. It's located at the Orman Beach Senior Center. The veterans' tickets are free, and they may purchase a guest ticket for $7. Hometown Heroes program, we've been doing that for a number of years. The Hometown Heroes banners are up along the Halifax Bridge, I think Granada Bridge, I guess we should say. Halifax Health has routinely sponsored that event, and they provide drive-through meals for our veterans, and so we, and last year, I think we honored 96 veterans alone, so the Hometown Heroes Drive-Thru Recognition will be held on Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the senior center, and that's, great for that. You have a number of different activities. Ghost Stories at the Casement sadly is sold out, but that is a wonderful event. They do something exciting every year for Halloween, and Hurricane Milton, as I said, was tougher than we expected, but we are strong and resilient, and we will persevere. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Commissioner Sargent?
When is our third-party hauler coming to start? When will they start that process, pick up the debris?
Thank you for bringing that up. So Crowder Golf is in town, and we expect them to get trucks by Friday. Sean, do you want to speak to this? Just a little bit of background, because of the state being so severely impacted, these haulers are challenging to get here, and there's become a bidding war. The state of Florida has indicated certain requirements for local governments, and Sean will talk a little bit about that.
Yes. With any, with any storm, we're not the only community affected. We had Hurricane Helene that affected the state two weeks ago, and that puts us in a whole different situation than we normally are. So with that, getting, getting those haulers is a little bit more difficult. We have Crowder Golf, who is our, who is our, who is our contract. We met with them yesterday. We met with Thompson, who is our auditor. They were onsite here yesterday. We opened our de, our debris management site today. One of the things to make sure until we get those haulers in-house, we certified three of our trucks, so our, our crews are out there collecting that, those as well. We had a commitment from three that backed out because the FEMA rates, just under $10 a cubic yard, Hillsborough County is paying $15 a cubic yard. So we're, we're trying to get, to figure out how we combat that, how can we get a, how can we get a rate that is competitive with them, that will be fully reimbursed by FEMA? So we're, we're working with Ann Margaret and the city attorney's office to make sure that we, we do everything we can to get those on. We were informed by Crowder Golf earlier today that we have six trucks headed to us from Wisconsin. We want to make sure that those, those trucks, that as they come down from Wisconsin, they come down on I-10, they make a left on, I'm sorry, they come down on I-75, they make a left on I-10, they can, they continue down to I-95, they don't, they don't continue to Tampa. We want to make sure that we keep them, them here. Everything indicates that we, that we will. We do have one of our locals who has signed on with Crowder Golf to help us out as well, so we're going to, we intend to do everything we can to supplement what we can get from Crowder Golf and from, 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 from our other haulers. We expect them, we expect them Thurs- Thursday, as Joyce mentioned, and again, we'll, we'll continue to, to work on that as, as best as we can, and, and we will keep you informed every step of the way. We, with our crews, we're going to work them on, 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 on some of our collector roads. They were on Halifax, North Halifax today, trying to get some of that, that, some of those side streets, working on John Anderson. One of the, the additional things that we're going to try and do, that came out with the executive order, is that the governor mandated that we do a 24/7 operation. That's going to be tricky, but if that's what we need to do, we're going to figure out a way to do that, and, and, and there's different things that we can do, not necessarily in, in the neighborhoods, you know, that, that's one of the things that we're, we're looking at, maybe limiting those to two shifts, you know, a shift that starts at 5:00 a.m. that works till 3:00, a shift that works from 3:00 to 11:00. We don't, we want to be aware of our residents. We don't want to disrupt their lives by having people out there at 3:00 in the morning clicking, but there's things that we can do that maybe are quieter at that degree, at that debris management site, scoping things out, maybe some quieter things. We'll keep you in, in line if there's anything that's out of the ordinary with this one than, than previous ones. Again, our goal is to be fully picked up well within that 90-day period, that'll get us 100, 100% reimbursement, and, and, and make sure that we get 100% reimbursement of what we're spending. If you have any other questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sean? No. Or Joyce? Thank you. Assistant city manager, Claire Whitley.
Good evening. So first, I'd just like to say, as you probably know from years past, this is my favorite meeting of the year. Joyce and Randy are both equally dedicated and humble, and incredibly deserving of the high marks and compliments they have to endure publicly. This year is especially poignant, as it may be the last one with Mayor Partington at the helm, and when I think about all the goals they've achieved and obstacles they've overcome, it's always been with the mayor, the city manager, and the city attorney working hand in hand. They're compassionate, they're committed, and truly a force to be reckoned with, and I learned tonight that all three are equally good at deflecting credit for their amazing work, just why you all work together so well, I'm sure. All right. Also, I'd just like to comment and say thank you so much for your support on the employee health insurance benefits and that package, especially the health savings account. We worked so hard on that several years ago to create an affordable and high-quality healthcare plan for our employees. It's incredibly challenging, and your support has been just so important through that, as well as our partnership with Florida Healthcare. As you know, they provide, you know, so many no-cost healthcare services for our employees so that they never feel like they're, that they can't get the care they need. And we've done some really wonderful initiatives with them, wellness initiatives, to address healthcare problems, and so it's, it's so satisfying, not just financially, to, to get competitive rates and make it affordable for our employees, but also to impact their health, and, and that's just been wonderful to watch over the years, so thank you for continuing to support us in doing that. And we will, Commissioner Sargent, as you mentioned, we did market it this year, even though our renewal was lower than budgeted and below market, the industry market, we do, we do go out to market every couple of years, just to make sure we are competitive on that, because we don't want to take for granted at any time that we're not spending those dollars wisely. And also, just one more comment on the salary comparisons for the city manager and the city attorney. I will bring that information back to you. The, all of our employees do receive small increases every year that you all approve with the budget, and then, as you know, we do pay and classification plans, studies, you know, maybe every three to seven years, depending on the market, and that is when we adjust our employees due to market changes, you know, up or down, any, any direction, and we just did one about two years ago for our employees. The city manager and city attorney are not included in those adjustments. The last time they had an adjustment was 2017. So I will prepare all of that and the comps, and I'm happy to bring that back to you for you to review. Yes, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Appreciate that. Claire, and city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you these past two decades. That's, that's a long time. It's almost like being married. I remember when you first started, and you were a very good statesman here as a city commissioner, and anybody that's, that works in government knows that, for any length of time, that it's an evolutionary process, and you have evolved into a wonderful leader, and it's going to serve you well in Tallahassee. We will always be a resource for you here, so you may be gone, but you won't be forgotten. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, thank you. And tonight, we start with deputy mayor Breyly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess it's kind of a, an honor to be the first on your, on your last evening, but first off, I want to thank our city staff. I had a discussion with the chief today, and, you know, it seems like we were, kind of experienced a hurricane hangover the last few days. Everything just kind of seems to be a blur, but I want to thank our city staff for the hurricane relief, and, and, and Sean Finley, I know that you've, your phone, your phone's been burning up as, as well as Joyce's, but, you know, all of our folks, our public works folks, our public protection folks, obviously police and fire, you know, every position of this city, I just want to thank our entire staff for the hard work they have put in during this storm. They've been responsive- They've been responsive, they've done great work. And I really want to thank our city staff and the work they continue to do. Unfortunately, I did have the, well, I did have the pleasure of knowing some fine folks that unfortunately were on the sad end of the tree that fell and killed the wife. And the husband is still in ICU in the hospital. Very sad, I'm very sad that we've lost a couple of lives in our city during the storm. Kind of brings me to another subject. I have received, actually prior to the storm, an email from a constituent regarding a tree, a tree that was removed. The tree was removed without a permit and apparently not, the residents did not consult with an arborist before having the tree removed. The individual felt the tree was an imminent hazard to their home and so they had the tree removed. And I didn't know if it would interest this commission to possibly have a workshop in the future, in the near future, to discuss how some of these hazardous, what could be deemed hazardous trees on people's property, how that would be handled. You know, I have one of those, I actually have one of these types of trees in my yard. It's about a 400-year-old oak that leans right over the house. And if it were to fall, it would probably just destroy my house. But I leave it there because it's a historic oak and I like it. My wife feels differently, but, you know, she's probably home right now cutting it down. I don't know. But I don't know if there's any interest with the commission in having a workshop to discuss maybe how we address these in the future, how, you know, how we can just, maybe even just review the ordinance and see if we want to tweak it at all.
So right now, the planning department and our landscape architect, they are discussing all the tree ordinances, the landscape ordinances. And maybe that can be part of that discussion. We didn't have a, we're on round two of that discussions. And I don't remember that being specific as far as trees that are threats to your homes. But Stephen, maybe you can help me. There is a, there was a section in there about that. So maybe we can add that to their discussion to help us.
Sure.
There is a state law that allows an arborist or a registered landscape architect to issue a letter for imminent trees. So absent that letter, they have to follow the tree permitting requirements. So we would be happy to wrap it up and the landscape discussion is coming before the commission or whatever your pleasure is.
Yeah, I don't think, so what I was saying is I don't think a workshop is. I think they're already things in place.
Sure, I think part would be too, though, if you remove an imminent dangerous, an imminent tree, if you would be required to do the replacement ratios at the same ratio. Because, you know, why would you take down a hazardous tree then put one in its place just for it to fall, you know, in the future? I mean...
It's all, it's all good discussion.
It is, it is.
Agreed. An educational for not only the commission but all the residents. I don't know if you had the chance to see Mr. Dunbar's op-ed in the News Journal talking about the Ormond Beach Tree Ordinance, directly on point with Mr. LaCombe, I think is who you're referencing. And I got his email too. And I don't know exactly what the answer is. I think he fell victim to a contractor who led him to believe he was following all the appropriate steps and then turns out he wasn't. I don't know if the city can put something in the code that allows for documentary, video, or picture evidence of the condition of the tree. Because we all see these oaks that are chopped down, that are solid, beautiful oak wood, looks super healthy, and then we see the ones that have huge rotted holes in the middle of them. We can figure out what was dangerous and what wasn't. But I don't think they're allowed to review that after the fact when the proper procedure wasn't followed in the first place. But all of those kind of things are the types of things. I think it's a good idea, Deputy Mayor, at least to discuss that when it comes up and get as much education on that as possible. City Manager Shanahan.
If you can discuss that too, you might as well. What kind of mitigation is necessary, replacement of trees and how many? And that's something that you can also talk about.
Because even with the imminent trees, and I'll just use mine as an example, the tree's very healthy. But prior to the hurricane, prior to the storm, we had five to six inches of rain which saturated the ground. And I've seen a lot of these trees just approved because the root structure, I mean, the ground couldn't hold the root structure. The tree was healthy, but it came down because, you know, the ground was saturated. So some of these imminent trees are not, they're even healthy trees, but just how do we, you know, how do we look at them? So. I'll move on to the State of the City lunch today, was fantastic. It was a wonderful event at the Oceanside Country Club. Mr. Mayor, you did a fine job with the ACE Awards. And I thought it was a good event. I want to, once again, just congratulate Hunter Wendelstedt on your proclamation and your goodwill ambassadorship to the city of Ormond Beach. You make us proud and you give us a lot of exposure when you're on, when you're out doing your thing. So we appreciate that. Something I think that Commissioner Boyle, former Commissioner Boyle discussed this evening was the city commission. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you've touched on it as well. I am just over the top pleased with how this commission gets along. I mean, we really, we work together. As I think, Mr. Mayor, you said we can be disagreeable at times. We can disagree, but we're never disagreeable. So I just want to shout kudos out to my fellow commissioners. Great work, you all do a great job. And lastly, I guess, I'll start off congratulating Mayor Partington on your last meeting. Thank you for everything you've done. I've known you over, well over 20 years before you even elected official. In fact, I was serving on the planning board when you were elected to the commission, I think in 2000. Back when we used to have city commission elections on odd years. I think it was 2003, I think is when you were elected. And I was on the planning board in the DRB and remember working with you back in those days. But you've been a tremendous leader, a consensus builder. You know, residents and commissioners look to the mayor for guidance and leadership and you've certainly provided that as your term as mayor. Again, just, you're a great mentor and a great friend and I wish you luck in Tallahassee. I know you represent as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner Tolland.
Thank you. So mine is not in any specific order. I do want to just shout out again to the Native Plant Month celebration, so thank you. Thank you guys for putting up with me with all the native plants. I do appreciate it, think we're making good progress.
I just want to see, I want to see what a pawpaw is.
Yeah, honestly, I learned something tonight.
Can you bring one?
No, I don't know what a pawpaw plant is, so, but I know it's native. Anyway, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, they are a society that has worked behind the scenes for a long time. And it's just cool that they're getting some recognition and getting some traction in Volusia County and in Ormond Beach. I wanted to piggyback on what Joyce was saying when she was thanking her staff and all her employees and she named quite a few people and all the hard workers. I did go up to Nova Rec when they were giving out the sandbags. I thought, oh, in my little way, I would go up and take a little lunch order and go over to Burger King and get some lunch. They had, it was such an efficient system. And there was probably 100 employees out there in orange shirts, sweating, putting sand in bags, in everybody's car. There was a line of traffic, stacks of pizza boxes. So my little offer was like, thank you lady, just go home, we're got, we got it. But what I, what she, I think she failed to mention was an oversight is the amount of public information that we received by Jen Elston. She was amazing. I would, residents would call me and I would say, look on, you know, look on our, on Instagram and on our website or what's going on. And she was always right on it. And, you know, I know probably just like all of you all up here, you would have a resident call and say, hey, the water mains break, we got raw sewer going in our garage, we have this and that. One phone call and within 15 minutes, you would get a response from our city manager or from Sean or whoever saying, here's a picture of that truck already addressing that issue. So it, the responsiveness was amazing. Let's see. Also want to just let you all know that I did attend the Florida League of Cities Policy Committee last week on utilities, natural resources, and public works. We are in the process of creating a legislative statement for a tally. Some of the discussions were on water, how you provide water to neighboring cities, the surcharge, if that's what they want to do, what they don't want to do. So there was a very lively discussion if you are a water provider or a water receiver, what, how you are going to address that. So I'm not sure if we're going to come up with an answer on that. There was also a good discussion on the State Park Initiative that the FDEP was talking about, let's say, last month to increase public use in state parks. And that was a very vehement no, that nobody wants that and we'll probably work through that. And then there was also some recycling initiatives and talking about recycling and obstacles. So it's all good discussion. I'm really happy to be on this committee. I think it really will make an impact in all of Florida at some point. Also want to thank those that did walk for the American Heart Walk and those that donated to it. I hope next year that I will be a better team leader and try to get more people involved and raise more money. I think we raised about $500,000, geez, 500, yeah, $5,000. $5,000? No, $500. See, I've never been good with money. Anyway, we did raise a good amount of money and we had a nice walk, two-and-a-half-mile walk around the Speedway. So thank you for those that came to that event.
Can you change to Saturday?
Yes, I think Friday night is a bad night, but I'm not in charge. Bill, I, you know, we, this has been like the Bill Day. I can, everywhere I go, it's a Bill Day and you deserve it. I just want to thank you for your years of service to Ormond Beach as a commissioner and as a mayor. I've only really gotten to know you the last few years as a mayor. And your commitment and to really preserving home rule was really, is really notable and protecting our residents from that heavy industrial development. For all of us to make a statement and for you to help lead us through there was really appreciated. And I just wish you the very best as you move forward in your career. And I'm sure you won't forget Ormond Beach when we contact you with all our needs and our wish lists. And lastly, but not leastly, I want to, I do want to thank the city manager and staff and all our first responders for their 24/7 attention and the efforts to keep our community safe from the hurricane. It has been amazing. You know, Mother Nature never shows any mercy when it decides to show, when she decides to show up. And our community is very blessed to have caring, hard-working personnel and leadership. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot tonight. First, I would like to echo my fellow commissioners' heartfelt thank you to staff. I mean, working tirelessly through this hurricane. And on Sunday, seeing all these employees out there fixing the drainage pipes, fixing everything. And I'm sure some of them have their own personal issues to deal with at home and they're doing it with a smile. So thank you. Saturday, I had the privilege of meeting with the CEO of FPL out at the Speedway along with Senator Wright and Daytona Beach Commissioner Juanita May. It was great for, you know, he asked us our concerns and questions and what we needed. And here we are Tuesday and I don't see anyone that's without power right now on the grid that I just looked on online. I'm sure there's some one-offs, but for the most part, everyone has our power back. I mean, this is almost unheard of. So that's a great commitment that they have to, you know, partner with the city of Ormond. Their efforts were greatly appreciated. I would like to, you know, as we move forward from recovery, to start looking maybe at these, the city culverts and how can we inspect them and maybe do better? And we do a great job, but I always think we can do better. Some of them are old, collapsing, and I just think that as much rain as we had, I know there's, it was a lot at once, but I just think that we need to look at these culverts. I also think that, and I've been thinking about this for many years and some people think I'm crazy, but it would be great if we could have staff look at working with someone about maybe doing a study of doing an inlet up at High Bridge. It would open up the flow of the river, clean it out, reduce water levels. That property just north of High Bridge has a natural cut all the way to A1A. It's already federal land, you're not taking anyone's property. I know it's kind of a far-fetched, it's outside of the city's realm. But if you look at it, the flow of this river here is pretty stagnant because of all the bridges that have been put in over the years. So going to Ponce Inlet, it doesn't flow well. And then we have the small inlet of Matanzas that really doesn't empty out that much either. So just a thought to throw out there at the High Bridge area. I don't know what it would do to the Tamoca River or the basin. I mean, there's a lot of things to look at. Just out there. Ike Leary left, but another great fishing tournament that we had last weekend. The sergeant boys came first and third in their age divisions. I broke one of the trophies, put one to bed the other night, but I have to glue that together. And it was great too, even after a hurricane, Robert, the fields out at the Hall Road, we were able to have a baseball game last night. I mean, four, I think four of the fields, three of the four of the fields, we had games playing. Kids running around after we just got done with the hurricane. I mean, that's great. And they weren't flooded anymore. So I'm looking forward to Nova Road getting opened up hopefully tomorrow. Tonight, great, because the kids really want to play ball. What else do I have here? I guess I'll end with you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service to our community. I pride myself on being able to read people. I took a class years ago. I got to tell you, I can't read you. You have a great poker face. I never know which way it's going to go and it's always a surprise and it's great. I appreciate your leadership and your commitment to the city of Ormond and look forward to your leadership in Tallahassee. Just wish you the very best. And with that, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioner Persis.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Commissioner Sargent, I just want to tell you what you mentioned about High Bridge. All these old-timers I know that have grown and raised here have always talked about that, having an inlet at High Bridge. That's something that I'm so happy that you brought that up because that's been out there, it's been talked about. So I'm glad you brought that up, I just have to say, that's wonderful. I just want to also thank staff for everything you did for, during and after the hurricane. It was, it was quite a storm that we had and unprecedented rain. And, you know, Ormond Beach is a wonderful city and they show it, you know, when the times are good and when the times are bad. And they definitely did, you know, showed up and helped everybody as much as they could during this terrible storm. I would like for us to keep the families of those who lost someone during this hurricane in your prayers. At least, you know, two people we, you know, knew in our community passed away. Very sad that that had to happen. So please keep them in your prayers. Today, we had the State of the City and, Mr. Mayor, you did a great job leading that. It was wonderful. Our city's thriving and we're just doing great. It's something to be so proud of. I just, I love being there. And I also wanted to say that I also attended my committee meeting at the Florida League of Cities last month, or was it, it was this month, earlier. And I'm on the Municipal Operations Legislative Policy Committee this year. And each committee, what they do is they set priorities. We meet about three times during the year and then we, at the end, we will vote and decide what priority we want to focus on and bring it up to Tallahassee to see if we can get funding or get support with that. And so the four priorities we talked about that we ended up all liking was public safety, recruitment, and retention. And that goes with our first responders, you know, and our firefighters and people that help us. And I think that's so important that we are focusing on that. I was absolutely thrilled. The next one was cybersecurity. The next one was cybersecurity, incident liability, because that's starting to happen a little bit more with cities and businesses, so that's something that we need to look at. Virtual governing body meetings, which is like if you have a YouTube channel, which I think we're going to be getting, those people can see our meetings live. And then the last one was public records exemptions for city clerks and staff, because that's something that they didn't think that was that important, that they needed to go through all that paperwork for, for those folks. So, I'll keep you posted on that. Let's see. I did that. I also want to thank Hunter Wendelstadt for being our ambassador. Thank you very much. That's wonderful. You, I can't think of a better person, just, just perfect, so I'm very proud of you. And lastly, Bill, this is real hard for me to say goodbye to you sitting here. I don't want to, want to, want to cry, but I've known the Partington family a long time, and I see, you know, Lori out there, and Anne, and Faith, and CJ. I was Anne's principal, I was Faith's principal, and Lori was always at the school helping, and Bill would be, would come and give the teacher, Teacher of the Quarter awards, and I got to know the family, and, and now here we are at, at this point. And it's just, I'm very excited for you, I'm thrilled, I'm going to miss you a lot. I'm just so glad we're friends, and I feel like I'm friends with your whole family, and I really care about each of you. And I know good things are coming, I mean, good things, and I think change is always good, and, and, you know, we always have to move on. But just thank you for all you've done over 21 years for the city of Orman Beach and how you've led us just so, in such a wonderful, classy and sophisticated and just wonderful manner. And I think we have all, all of us, you've heard all of us say, we've all learned from you. And, and that's what you do, you take all the good things and you use them in whatever comes up in your life. So, thank you again for everything, I'm just very, very proud of you. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. And thank you all for the, for the kind words, it's very special. The Heart Walk was fantastic. I love the Speedway anyway, and so to be there, walking around it, it has so much history, and, you know, most of the time, you see it on TV or you see it, if you're lucky enough to go to a race in person, but to be out there on the track. Next year, I'm looking for the Heart Saunter, because Joyce and Commissioner Tolland really walk fast. So, I was, I didn't let them know, like, I didn't want to look weak or anything, but I was struggling to keep up. It was good for me, probably, two and a half miles right off the bat. But a great event, and Commissioner Tolland, thank you for your leadership on that, a great community spirit out there for that, for that whole thing. The State of the City was fantastic. If you haven't seen the video, I think it's one of the best that staff has put together. Each of the commissioners did a wonderful job in their segments, and it's so much better than a, than a long speech, and I think so much, the way it portrays all that happens in a year, it's almost mind-boggling to see all the things that are going on. My guess is you can pull that off of Facebook or even on search YouTube, or, so it's all over, it's out now, there's a QR code also that you can get it, but, or text me or email me and I'll send it to you. But it was one of the best, and so many great people that we were able to recognize. As far as the policy committee goes with the Florida League of Cities and the National League as well, I want to thank the commission for being so involved in that. You learn so much and you get ahead on so many of the issues, and then you also share your knowledge with other people from around the state and with FLC staff, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to do all those things, and it benefits the city of Orman Beach, so thank you all for it. It's extra time and extra work, but you've committed to it, so thank you. Thank you for that. The hurricane was a gut punch to the city of, of Orman Beach. Our ground was already saturated, super wet already from weeks of rain prior to, Helene also brought rain, and then to get almost two feet, I think Orman Beach had the most rain in the entire county, I think I heard Jim Judge say that, almost two feet of rain within less than 18 hours, it's just an incredible amount, and was going to overwhelm our systems no matter what. I checked with the city manager, and my understanding is that there were only 11 homes that had water in them. You hate to have water in any home, but that '09 storm, I want to say we had 30 or 40 homes, if not more, with water in them. So, we, we have improved in a way. You can never completely solve the problem. They say men, men plan and God laughs, but we can try, and we have tried, and we've made great strides. The one thing, Joyce and Sean, I hope you'll continue to push for the funding of the Fleming Pump to the River Underground. That's the south end of Central Park. I feel like that pump would be able to get a lot more water out quicker and really solve a lot of the problems, not only for Orman Beach, but being on the north end of the Nova Canal system would help Daytona, Holly Hill and Port Orange as well prevent flooding and, and move a lot of water. Regrets, of course, and sympathies, I hate the fact that we lost two Orman Beach residents. Terrible situation, very sad, and so, just unfortunate. I don't really think there's anything we could have done. When a tree falls like that, you never expect it. Deputy Mayor, like you said, we all have, and probably all of us have trees around our houses that something like that could happen, and just, but for the grace of God, it didn't. The other was a heart attack situation, and we couldn't get to them in time. Nobody's, nobody's fault, just terrible, terrible timing, but certainly regrets and sympathies to the families on that. Our staff is amazing. You say the word hurricane and they have like a muscle reflex reaction where they spring into action every time, and they know exactly what to do and when to do it. It's amazing to watch, it's amazing to listen to. I had a radio for the last two storm events, and when you listen to Public Works, you listen to police, and you listen to fire, the number of calls that they go on and the professional bearing that they have in dealing with all those situations. Wednesday morning, I think it was, I was listening to the, the scanner, and there was a naked man reported on Walter Boardman Lane, and I thought to myself, all right, here we go, the storm has begun. Luckily, that's in Volusia County, so it wasn't Orman Beach's problem, but it's just, it's just a, you know, you never, you never know. Yeah, you can't, you can't make it up, but there were a lot of heart attacks, there were a lot of strokes that our fire department was responding to. Police had to calm a lot of situations, people really get on edge during these events, and listening to Public Works and the professionalism that they responded to water main breaks and sewer issues, traffic issues, whatever it was, everybody worked so hard and did an amazing job. I really appreciate that Joyce has Claire and Sean as assistant city managers who have extreme expertise and specialties in different areas. I think, I mean, I just love that team structure, and it's just kind of developed in the last couple of months, and I've been meaning to say that, but each of you is special to the city, Sean and Claire, and we're lucky to have you, and thank you for all you do for Orman Beach and to help Joyce, because I know she relies on you quite a bit. The sewage issue, the one gentleman spoke about, I know you're working on that. It's hard, any city, when you get hit with that much water, and we, I know as a city, we self-report that to DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. I get those emails from around the county, because I signed up for them years ago, and our problem isn't as bad as many other cities and the county, but when you get that much water, you're going to have some overflow. And we treat it, rake it, spread lime, do all the things that you can do to mitigate whatever the spill was, and we didn't have huge spills from, from the numbers that I saw, but we self-report it then to make sure that DEP knows that what we're doing, and it's transparent. Nobody's, nobody's trying to hide the fact, and I think it's well, well understood and accepted that that's a problem when you have these huge storm events. Electricity, Commissioner Sargent, you talked about, we got ours back yesterday afternoon. Thank gosh, it was a little cooler, so it was easier to deal with versus the summer storms where it's just miserable hot when there's no electricity. But there's no rhyme or reason to it. We have underground utilities. Some people say, well, if we just undergrounded them, we'd be able to survive a storm and never lose electricity. Not true, because we have underground utilities and, and we didn't have power for four days. I know in Tomoka Oaks, I think it's Pine Valley Circle, they have above-ground utilities, and they didn't have power for almost four days, if I, if I recall correctly. So, really, there's no, no rhyme or reason to it. I think hardening is good, and I know along, gosh, is it Tomoka Avenue? There's some old infrastructure there with FPL, and the lines are working and the power's on now, but I think they really need to look at improving that area and maybe hardening that infrastructure there. Also, the tree on Orchard west of Arby's, the trees really got hit hard there, and it's going to change the look of that area, which I hate, because between the bank and, and there, there's some beautiful, there were some beautiful old oak trees, one of the largest ones in front of the bank, but the tree that I'm thinking of west of Arby's is, half of it has sheared off, and what's left of it is cracked in a precarious way where that huge branch, I, I worry is going to fall on somebody's car when they're least expecting it. And I think, I don't know if that's the city's responsibility, but if you could look at that just to make sure, it just looks like it's ready to let go, and I don't want anybody hurt. Let me make sure I covered everything. I think that's everything, really. Commissioner Sargent, I love the inlet idea at High Bridge, when you sit at Matanzas or you sit at Ponce and you look at the beautiful, clear water coming in and out of there, and to think we could have that in the Halifax River again and have the Tomoka River continuing to be a, a beautiful, natural, pristine river, I love that idea. Commissioner Persis, you talked about, people have been talking about that for years, and so I would be all interested in trying to figure out how to make that happen. I'll close just by saying that there are exciting times ahead for Orman Beach. This particular commission has been wonderful to work with, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. The picture that I gave you, again, is one of my, one of my favorite pictures, and I'll cherish these last two years. So, thank you all for that, and with that, we are adjourned. Goodnight.